All right, let's call the session to order. It's Wednesday, November 2nd. It's town of Groveland zoning board of appeals. We have a motion to open?
So motion.
Motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, first on the docket today, continuation of application twenty twenty-three dash four. One fifty-four Center Street HKL Realty LLC requests a special permit in accordance with section fifty point four point five table of uses of the Groveland zoning bylaw for a contractor's yard at the premises, at the premise, rather. Evening.
We're being broadcast tonight, I think?
We are.
Was we're trying to set up the easel so that it can be both by you and the television?
With the man behind the curtain, okay to comment on what the best?
You got a camera up there.
If you can set up open there in the corner facing this way, it would be best like pointing at cameras. Yeah.
Do it so hopefully the board members can see as well. I'll try to present from over here without my back to everyone.
Do you have a microphone?
Yeah.
Do you or do we have a microphone?
But yeah.
So, well, that's not very even, is it? Good, good morning or good evening, Mr. Chair. Let me try to get this straight so you can see it. That's better. I've got a couple of things preliminarily. So my name's Adam Costa. I'm with the firm of me, Talim, and Costa was before you. Two weeks ago for this special permit application on behalf of my client, one fifty-four Center Street. I have four additional green cards we received back since the last session of the public hearing. I also have, and I did not get the opportunity to submit it in advance, but I also have a letter. I don't expect you to read it now. It's mostly just capturing what I'm going to present tonight, but I wanted to provide it to you so board members had it in their hands. And if you, it's easier for you to refer, for example, to the plan that's in your packet instead of looking at what's on the, on the easel, you can certainly do so. So, members will remember that when we were before you two weeks ago, we presented the proposal for a contractor's yard. And we received quite a bit of feedback, both from board members and from a few residents who spoke as well, relative to not only my client's operation, but the proposal to potentially lease portions of the site for third-party contractors to use. And the board had a number of requests that they made of us. And what I've attempted to do here, both in my letter, but also I'll walk members through what's shown on, on the easel and on the revised plan, is to address the various topics that board members addressed and that members of the public addressed. So I'll do it in the order in which it's identified in the letter, and then, of course, I'll direct you to what's shown on the revised plan. And you do have a copy, I think it's attachment A, in the letter to a color version of the same plan that's here on the easel, updated through, through yesterday. So, the first request that board members had was a better understanding and frankly, a better delineation of what we were going to use the site for. We had talked about truck storage. We had talked about dumpster storage. And we got into a fairly detailed discussion about empty dumpsters versus dumpsters that might be partly or completely full. We talked about an area for contractor storage. We talked about parking. We talked about the existing septic system on the site, which long-term, we hope to abandon when we're able to connect to sewer. But we talked about maintaining an area free from any onsite storage in the location of that septic system. So you had asked us to better delineate the areas affiliated with each of these various things I've just referenced. And then also to provide some sense of dimension or footprint of these various areas. So you can see here now in the plan that that's what we've attempted to do. We have the largest area of the site, which is here in the northeast corner of the site. This is the area that we're proposing for proposed vehicle and empty container storage. So this is a sort of an awkwardly shaped area, so we don't have specific dimensions on it, but we do have a square footage. It's approximately twelve thousand square feet. And this is where my client proposes to store trucks in empty, empty containers, dumpster dumpsters. We have another area here on the northwest corner where you can see it says proposed full dumpster storage. And one thing that the board had discussed was delineating an area for full dumpsters versus empty dumpsters. And then providing for some degree of protection, the concern that was raised, we don't store full dumpsters on the site for any lengthy period of time. But as my client had conceded at the last meeting, there are periods of time when, let's say, there's a pickup that occurs after hours, when the dumpster can't be brought to a facility, recycling facility or disposal facility. And so it has to be brought onsite and left onsite overnight. And maybe in a worst-case scenario, that happens on a Friday, and it's left overnight through the weekend until Monday morning. And so the concern was, well, what happens in the interim? If the weather's good, probably nothing. It sits there for a few days and then it gets relocated. If the weather's not so good, we get a rainstorm, torrential rains. The concern was, well, what happens if there are items in the dumpster that could potentially leach out? We don't want them leaching directly into the soils. And so there were some suggestions about some kind of an impervious surface, even some sort of a barrier to be sure that there was a degree of protection. So what we proposed here, and it's the second point in my letter, is a, a specific area designated for what we've said to be full dumpster storage, but the reality is it's going to be intermittent storage, and it may not be completely full dumpsters. It may be partly full dumpsters, but any dumpster that has to return to the site temporarily before it's brought to a recycling or disposal facility will be stored in the full dumpster area. It's only an area that at most is going to provide for five dumpsters, although my client says he can't remember the last time there were five dumpsters on a site. So it's likely going to be one or two or three dumpsters. And this is an area that's going to be paved with an impervious surface, and it's going to have some form of curbing. I left it open-ended in my letter. We're happy to, to have a discussion with the board about your preferences. But whether that's a Cape Cod berm or some other form of, of, of berm or curbing to ensure that there is a barrier surrounding the impervious area, we're happy to, to oblige. Now, the reason we located it here and not elsewhere in the site is actually best depicted on the second exhibit or attachment, which is this one here in the letter, also in color. We were able to find this, in fact, in town records. As you know, the town is in the process of a sewer expansion project. And they have a sewer easement that runs along the easterly side of this property and on a portion of the easterly side of this property. And as a consequence, they have recently had plans prepared by Millennium Engineering for the sewer extension. And in connection with doing so, as you might imagine, they have to delineate the wetlands. They have to show the wetland resource areas on a plan. And they have to show the areas that are within the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction, anything within one hundred foot of a wetland resource area. So this is an excerpt from a plan set that was prepared by Millennium Engineering in two thousand and twenty-two, back in January. And you can see, and I added the yellow, excuse me, the, the red circle. You can see in the center, the red circle encapsulates the site. The site is, is the site that's shaped just like this in the center of the red circle. You can see that the wetlands are not located on the site. They're located on the DPW property immediately to the east of the site. But you can see that the one hundred-foot jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, that buffer zone, broadcasts onto the site. And it sort of broadcasts onto the site in such a way that it comes on and covers an area here and then back here. So more or less the easterly side of the site, not a straight line, but sort of comes on and then a couple of semicircles. And so what we wanted to do in locating that impervious surface for the full dumpsters is place it as far from the wetland resource area as possible. That's a benefit not only to the town, it's frankly, candidly, a benefit to us as well. We don't have to go through Conservation Commission permitting to get them to authorize the conversion of a pervious surface to an impervious surface within a hundred feet of a wetland. They'll do that from time to time. They don't like to do that. So we're able to avoid that by locating it here in the opposite corner of the property. Also, we've opted to put it at the rear of the property because that way it's as far as possible from Center Street. And as a consequence, in turn, as far as possible from the residences that are located on the opposite side of Center Street. We've also shown in the plan, before I move on from designated areas, the proposed contractor storage area. We described that to board members when we were before you a couple of weeks ago, but we hadn't delineated it on the plan. So we've shown the approximate locations here. Again, it's toward the front of the site or the, the center, center of the site. Also notable here, and this, I guess, goes to a later, later point, is that there is a fence that runs along the boundary here, really from the corner of the building to the property boundary with the DPW site, the town-owned land. A fence with a gate for access. And that serves a number of purposes. It serves a security purpose, obviously, because my client's going to have trucks and maybe to a lesser, lesser degree or lesser concern dumpsters located at the rear of the site. But it also provides a, a visual barrier and provides some sort of, some degree of noise relief with respect to what's occurring at the back of the site. So there's a, a fence that'll run along that, that boundary with, with gated access between the contractor storage area and the parking and the rear of the site where the truck and dumpster storage will occur. An additional attachment that we provided with the letter, and it's addressed in item three in, in the letter. The concern again was raised that these dumpsters could have any sorts of materials in them. And, and there was a, there was a reference, I think, made to, to paint or oil or hazardous materials of the last session of the, of the public hearing. So I asked my client, he had represented at the last meeting, that, well, my company doesn't accept those sorts of things. And so we wanted to provide you with a listing of prohibited items that we provide, or my client provides, to, to individuals who would, who would utilize dumpsters. And so we've got a whole list of materials here. You can see it's exhibit or attachment C to the letter of materials that are, that, that customers are notified are prohibited materials that can't be placed in, in dumpsters. And there's, you know, a couple dozen different materials that are listed there in the attachment.
Just so that's on the public record, would you mind reading out the list?
No, sure. I'd be happy to. So, so the list of items includes asbestos-containing materials, chemicals, rare earth ties, toxics, toxic hazardous materials, liquids, medical waste, food waste, oils, fuel or gas, batteries, lead paint, AC units, tires, propane tanks, tube TVs or CRT monitors, paints, fluorescent bulbs, mattresses, box springs, refrigerators, water heaters, white goods and appliances, furnaces and oil-based paints. So this is the list of prohibited items.
Thank you.
Sure. We didn't want to get too complicated. My client gave me a, a much more comprehensive list, for example, that had items that are surcharge items that he tells me are not items that, you know, necessarily with any great frequency are provided for disposal because there's a surcharge. But we just wanted to get you the baseline list of items that are prohibited for inclusion in dumpsters. And that's why we've, we provided that as an, as an exhibit. The last section of the letter addresses traffic noise and other nuisance effects. These were the things that we heard referenced by neighbors who were concerned about noise, who were concerned about traffic and traffic speeds specifically. And so what we've attempted to do here in the letter is address the ways in which we're going to make commitments or ways in which you could condition approval to ensure that these sorts of matters are addressed. Now, you know, I, I caveat everything I say in the letter, as I, I think it's fair to do, by reminding the board that we are in an industrial district. This is an industrially zoned property. We have industrially zoned property on either side of the site. We have the DPW yard next to us, which has, is much greater in size than our site. And of course, has vehicles and equipment stored there year-round. I don't know the extent to which plowing operations are operated from the DPW yard, but I see the, I see on aerial photographs, they have plenty of plows stored there. So I imagine that in terms of hours of operation, while it may not be year-round, I imagine certainly in the wintertime and during the summer, whether there's a fair amount of loud traffic, heavy vehicles going in and out of the site. Obviously, the nature of this use does mean that there are going to be commercial vehicles going in and out of the site from time to time. In that regard, a couple of things. So first of all, from a, from a traffic volume perspective, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I know enough to at least refer to the Institute of Transportation Engineers manual with respect to traffic counts. There is no use category, land use category for a contractor's yard because it's not generally considered to be a high-traffic-volume generator. That's different, volume is different, of course, from type of traffic. But in terms of volumes of traffic, it's not, you know, a drive-through or a restaurant or a shopping plaza or anything of that sort where you've got comings and goings with great frequency and a large number of vehicle trips. You do have truck traffic as a consequence. It's, it's smaller trucks, but you have truck traffic on a site like this. We proposed hours of operation from six AM to six PM in terms of when there would be access to the site and use of the site by either my client representing or operating the, the business that he operates or contractors that might be leasing space at the site. That's our proposal. We're certainly happy to have discussions with the board if there are concerns about those hours. But that's what was presented in our original proposal, and that's what we've presented here as well. I mentioned before that we've got the fencing located on the site, which is in addition from the last version of the plan. I also made mention that, and I think any of you that know the site, and I actually provided an excerpt from, I think it was Google or Bing or something like that, showing just the view of the site when you enter one fifty-four Center Street in and you go to streetscape. You can see that, you know, you don't, you're not looking directly into the site when you're on Center Street. There is a bit of a vegetated buffer within this setback, thirty-foot setback that's shown there in the front of the plan. In the proposed conditions, because I provided proposed conditions to the board, if the board sees fit to grant approval, I've indicated that my client would be sure to maintain that vegetated buffer at the front of the site or even potentially in the future supplement. We've had some conversations about the possibility of, of fencing at the, at the front of the site, probably not directly on Center Street, but a ways back to provide added security, to provide even lesser visibility from Center Street. So we're happy to discuss those things as well. But minimally, we're, we're comfortable committing to maintaining that vegetated buffer so that the, the screen will continue to exist. And that is, as I made mention, that's the last of the five attachments to my letter is just a list of proposed conditions. There's nothing too exceptional there, really. It's excerpts directly from the letter and the commitments that we've made between last meeting and this meeting. And then I think the last three or four of the proposed conditions are meant to address the things that we had discussed at the last meeting, largely in response to comments that we had received from other boards, commissions, committees, departments of the town. So you, you recall that your building official, Mr. Jocelyn, was concerned about temporary storage of vehicles within the building and wanted to know what temporary meant. And we had committed at the last meeting that no more than three months is what we had said. So I've got that as a proposed condition. There was a concern with respect to storage within the leaching field or septic area. So I've got a condition that we wouldn't store there unless and until we're able to connect to, to sewer, at which point that would free up that area of the site. And then lastly, there's a, a commitment here that there would be no, no storage within the town sewer easement, as I mentioned before. The easement runs along the easterly boundary of the property. So we wouldn't store anything within the easement at, at, during the period of construction when the town is trying to gain access to complete its sewer extension project. Obviously, that's in, in our best interest, too, that that project had completed because then we can connect the site to sewer. So, again, I've said a lot. I tried to get through it as quickly as I could. But that's also why I provided the memo to you so you have it in written form. But we've, we've tried to be responsive. Oh, one other thing I don't, identified on the plan, the storage structure in the top right corner. It's in rough shape today. When I came before you last time, I'd indicated, or maybe my client had said it, that the intention was to preserve that structure, at least in the short term, not knowing what we'd ultimately do with it. Frankly, my client reaps a benefit maintaining that structure because it's an existing structure that's within Conservation Commission jurisdiction. It's effectively grandfathered. Based upon further discussions, we said, you know, we're prepared in the interest of trying to make this whole project work to relinquish those rights, just raise the structure. It allowed us to move that proposed vehicle and empty container storage into that corner, freeing up some of the area in the northwest corner for the full dumpsters and the area that we propose for some sort of impervious surface. So, again, that's, that's the proposal in a nutshell. That's our attempt to try and address the board's concerns and the public's concerns. We know we probably didn't get every one of them. We know that the neighbors may still have things to say. But, you know, we think that we've done an awful lot for an existing site that is industrially zoned, trying to make improvements both based upon existing conditions and based upon the, the feedback we got from the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the advocate on the board before we move on to public comment?
I have a quick question, Mike, for Jesse. How, when it's rented, how do you police contractors from six to six?
I would just make it a, a rule stipulation if, if they're going to rent space from there. They can't go outside of those hours. It'd be very clear. And in my, you know, we're in, in and out of there. My guys are in and out of there, so there'll be enough people to make sure that happens.
Well, could you lock the gates and say that's it? Well, could you lock the gates and say, that's it? Open them at 6:00, close them at 6:00 and see you later?
If I did an automatic gate at the front, you probably could do that. But, you know, for emergency situations, too, you'll obviously have to build a, get in there. But yeah, we'd make sure that nobody went outside the hours.
Or a PTI kind of gate?
What is that?
PTI, it's a gate controller. You can key it in and you have the ability, whether or not, you know what I mean, you as, you put yourself as a manager and you can get in at 24/7, but nobody else could?
Okay, yep. Keep that access.
Thanksgiving and Christmas, because of the residents, I understand it's the industrial zone, I would say, you know, probably look at something, no access.
Any other questions?
I think one of the parts I'm trying to get by is we're calling it a contractor's yard. We're basically dealing with dumpsters and trash. It just seems that that's what we're dealing with. You can call it what you want, but you're dealing with dumpsters and trash. I don't know how to get around that. You can call it what you want, but it is what it is.
Mr. Chairman, can I try and respond to that? So that was a comment, I think, that was also made at the last session of the public hearing. So I was mindful of it. And so I took a closer look at the definition of contractor's yard in your zoning, which is, I won't say vague, but it maybe doesn't have the specificity that any of us would like it to have. And I've got it here as a footnote in my letter. It's footnote two at the bottom of page one. It carries on to page two. Contractor's yard is defined as premises used by a contractor, subcontractor or other person doing business in construction, landscaping and related trades for the storage, either indoors or out, of vehicles, equipment, tools, supplies, materials, and even for fabrication of sub-assemblies. So that's the definition of the zoning by law. You know, we've not had, I don't think we've had direct conversations with Sam Jocelyn on the definition of contractor's yard, although we did present this proposal to him. And my understanding is that he was generally supportive of it or at least had no issue with it. I don't want to overstate the case, but he had no issue with it. I looked further and, you know, there's not a defined, contractor's yard is not a defined term in state statute because it's a zoning term. And in Massachusetts, although you've got the Zoning Enabling Act, zoning law is a creature of municipal governance. So municipalities define their terms. But contractor and contracting is used in other contexts. For example, Massachusetts has a homeowner contractor law that provides protections to homeowners dealing with contractors. So that law defines contractor and contracting very broadly to include reconstruction, alteration, renovation, repair, modernization, conversion, improvement, removal, demolition. So it includes some broad terms there in terms of what constitutes contracting. So, you know, I think that certainly we intend to provide for a variety of different services on this site. We're not strictly maybe a traditional landscape contractor, let's say. We're not necessarily a traditional finished construction contractor. But we've got a variety of businesses, dumpster rental, junk removal, moving, property management services. We're not a refuse facility. So as I said before, we're not storing refuse on the site for any extended period of time. We're not transferring or processing trash or recyclables on the site. None of that is going to occur. The chief business, even in connection with dumpster rental, is bringing dumpsters, empty dumpsters to sites, leaving them at those sites, retrieving them from those sites, bringing them to a disposal facility, emptying those dumpsters and returning the empty dumpster to the site. So what I think you can expect to find on a given day on the site would be vehicles and empty containers that are going to be let out on a case-by-case basis.
The goal would be to have no dumpsters on the site. So you have another location?
We have a spot in PBD.
And how was that run? Do you have a lot of dumpsters at any given time? Or are they gone for the most part?
They're gone, they're gone for the most part. And, you know, we've been slowly shifting everything over to this site. So they're gone for the most part. And there's busier times of the year. You know, we're in a spot right now that generally every time this year that dumpsters do stack up a little bit. But, you know, there are busier times of the year where we won't even have dumpsters at all available, that we're taking them from customers to bring them to another customer.
So your focus is on the Groveland site and you're not going to carry two sites?
The plan is to not have two sites.
In regards to the main existing structure, are there any thoughts as to how you'll be spec-ing that out? Are you doing just general spaces in there? Or are they going to be made specific to any potential leases you might have?
It's going to depend on who ends up renting those spots that are going to be available and what their need would be. If, you know, somebody needed like a 15 by 15 section, probably would just section it off for them.
All right, so you're not expecting to go in and do an overhaul of the space? Immediately, it's going to wait until any sub-classes are done and then just spec from there?
Exactly, yes.
So probably fall under the jurisdiction of Sam in the fire department, you know, with respect to the fire code?
I think that's correct. I mean, generally speaking, of course, you know, zoning is external in the sense that internal build-outs of sites is not within the purview of zoning or planning boards. Having said that, certainly there are health codes, fire safety codes that need to be complied with, building codes, of course. So I would certainly expect that to the extent that any of those are triggered by what occurs inside the building, that we would need to get the appropriate approvals. This simply gives us the overarching authority to utilize a site for a contractor's yard. You know, what other provisions of other laws we trigger is a different question. You know, we mentioned last time that we have been, you've received some feedback from the Board of Health concerning change of use, concerning the existing leach field. We're going to have to, and we've committed to have further discussions with the Board of Health concerning those issues to be sure that they're satisfied as well with respect to the new use, presuming that we're able to proceed.
I just wanted to clarify in terms of the trash. Most everything that you guys pick up is construction debris, remodels, and household cleanups. So there's not a lot of things that create a smell, that would attract rodents, things like that that actually go in the dumpster? Is that what I'm trying to stand when I look at the?
So I think that's accurate, but my client can speak better to, I mean, he operates the site. I'm not going to pretend as a lawyer that I'm there watching what's going into the dumpsters. So let me have him speak to what he sees.
That is accurate. It's people doing renovations, putting on additions, cleaning out their house or getting ready to move or, you know, just making some more space. It's not food, it's nothing that's going to attract anything, any rodents.
I think that's a big distinction when people start to hear about trash and dumpsters. That's where they automatically jump to, that really bad dumpster behind a restaurant that they can smell from a block away.
Yep.
I know Mellow also has dumpsters stored off of 97.
And trash trucks down the west. I mean, that's trash, trash, so.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. We do not do any of that regular kind of trash, that weekly trash pickups that Mellow would do or Waste Management would do that have the flip-top lids. We don't do anything like that.
It might also be helpful if my client speaks to the process of bringing the full dumpsters to a disposal recycling facility. Because in our discussions, and I don't think I can say it as eloquently as he said it to me, you know, when I continue to press him on, how are we sure that we're not dealing with these sorts of prohibited substances, you know, in the dumpsters? He explains to me, well, listen, I got an answer for that on the back end because I've then got to bring this to a disposal facility. So Jesse, can you talk a little bit about when you pick up a full or partially full dumpster from a site? What does your company do with it then?
Depending on what's in it, if it's recyclable material, whether it's metal, cardboard, it would go to the appropriate facility. As far as junk goes or trash goes, you know, construction debris stuff, when you go to a dump, most of it is a transfer station that we go to for that. And there's somebody, most of the time, in the building watching what comes out of the truck. And they check the load and make sure that there's nothing in there that can't be in there. Because, so they're really strict at those facilities as well.
One thing that, you know, has still stuck with me is the amount of days that the, any non-empty containers will put on because I know that can be a varying amount. Anything non-empty would be kept on-site. And I know it could be a few days and a few, that's kind of ambiguous for my taste as well. Would you be willing to accept the contingency, limiting it to a single overnight for anything non-empty?
Yeah, I could think through that probably. It's just this Friday, Friday ones that are the, would be the challenge. The facilities are.
Business night.
Some of the facilities are open on Saturdays. So if it is Friday, we can empty it, empty it Saturday. That probably would be okay.
What are the hours again?
The proposed hours are 6:00 to 6:00.
What time are they going to start moving dumpsters?
Nobody, not before 6:00 o'clock. And right now, we've been doing, you know, 6:30, 7:00, somewhere around there, but not before 6:00 o'clock.
I think it should be later than that.
Yeah.
6:00 is.
Regular industrial is 7:00 for the whole site as it is.
That's what I'm saying. It shouldn't be before 7:00 o'clock. You've got people, kids waking up and stuff.
Danny, can you confirm, is that 7:00 o'clock generally for the?
Can we just double-check the E codes when speaking correctly? That's not on, sorry. Yes, normal operating hours for permitted as-of-right uses must adhere to the following business hours. Industrial District, 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM, Monday through Saturday.
Thank you.
Yep.
From the board before we move on to public comment?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right. At this time, we'd like to open it up for a public comment.
Hello, my name's Corey LeBlank. I live at 157 Center Street, right across from the proposed business. So I've, you know, had some time to think about this and talk to other neighbors in the area. And so, you know, first thing is, is just looking at our zoning bylaws and, you know, Section A, I'm sure you guys know this by heart, the seven categories there, you know. I'm going to try to go through these as best I can, talking with our neighbors and what I think the negative impacts are these are. So social, economic and community needs which serve by this proposal. Other than tax dollars, I don't see any other thing that this is going to do good for the town. You know, the operating hours that are being proposed of 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, you know, on a Saturday, hearing a dumpster move is not really what you want to hear from a community perspective. You know, economic-wise, yeah, it's tax dollars, but it's also property values that are going to go down. Because I can tell you right now, anybody trying to sell their property around there sees a dumpster company across the street, they're not going to get their value right now. So property values will take a hit. You know, traffic flow. So as I hear it, this is just the first stage of increased traffic flow as he shuts down the PBD office or PBD site and transitions to this location. You know, again, there are community bus stops right there for school. There's no sidewalks, there's solar glare. It's already a concern. And adding more trucks at 6:00 AM when there's school pickups is going to be, you know, we're just asking for something bad to happen there. You know, as it relates to the operating hours, if, ideally, I don't think this should start at all, but at a minimum, you know, weekends is ridiculous to hear that. They made comments about the snow removal and the equipment there. I think as a community, we all have to deal with that, right? It's trucks, it's for safety, you're trying to clear the streets and I think people can understand that. And that's not all year round. Other things, so neighbor characteristics and social structuring. So, you know, again, I stated the property values, safety for children, residents in the area. So if the proposed is to have full dumpsters in the back and fenced in, you know, there are a large amount of coyotes that are in that field that's behind there. And so as much as we say there's going to be no food waste or, there could be. You don't know. I mean, I don't know how the town can police that or the property owner, right? You're not digging into the dumpster to see what's there. So that means that the coyotes are going to walk the perimeter, which is going to bring them closer to our residential properties. And that could happen at any time of the day if those are stored there. Impact on our environment. So, you know, it is a budding of wetlands. And so even the empty dumpster location that's being proposed, empty dumpsters are not empty dumpsters. There's still residual material in there. And so there could be runoff, there could be things that still leach into our water supply. Again, we went through this a while ago where this whole area was a superfund site in this location. There's no reason to repeat this mistake. I guess, you know, my question to the board is how do you, as the town, expect to police the length of time that dumpster's there? What's going to be there? To me, the only way to do that is to have a town employee on-site and manage this. So for the safety of the people around us, you know, a couple of tax dollars that is going to be eaten up by someone to actually really police this correctly is a moot point. And then, lastly, you know, we just put in a nice rail trail right in this area. And so people are going to be walking by, seeing dumpsters, trucks going back and forth. So, you know, I hope that this board can think about that and make the right decision for its community. That being said, I also did an online petition. And so I have roughly 60 people that have signed this. And this is within the last couple of days. So I'm sure I could get up to 100, 100 more or whatever. And that's 43 households, and I was still getting them as I was coming here. So, you know, I can appreciate an entrepreneur trying to do his business. I just think the location is bad. You've referenced 97 where there's already a trash company, but that's not near any residential areas. This is right near a residential area. The previous company was a plastics company that had two to three shipments a week out and two to three shipments in and was more like a resident than anything else. So this is a drastic change to what was already there. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Would you be able to give a copy of the petition to Danny? Thank you. Anyone else? Mike?
Mike, down to the Conservation Commission.
So I apologize that I'm just coming into this tonight. Just heard about it. Was not at the previous meeting. But right off the cuff, I was a little concerned that the applicant is talking about the wetlands on the site and being grandfathered in and other details, but never came to talk to the Conservation Commission about this project. So I would heartily recommend that you require him to file a request for determination of applicability for this project. It is a definite change in use from the previous company that was there. And there are significant wetlands next to it. There, you know, half the site is within the 100-foot buffer. So I know the commission is concerned when activities such as this are proposed. So I don't know if you want to wait on your decision, but I certainly would like you to require that they at least come and talk to us on an RDA. Because an RDA is not officially asking for permit, but that will get the official opinion of the commission rather than someone telling you off the cuff what the commission's opinion is. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. All right. Any more public comments? All right, we'll close the public comment then and open it up for a board discussion. All right, folks, what do we think?
Do you go first?
I mean, for the record, some of us did go do a site visit the day after our last meeting as well. The dumpsters, rather, that we observed there were in good condition. They were empty, they were decently cleaned. You know, there was no refuse in and around. So for what's that, for what that's worth, that was, seemed to be, you know, in good order as described by the applicant, I'll say. When all is said and done, it's still a dumpster storage. When, when all said and done, it's still a dumpster storage site.
I don't think we couldn't see it in the street. You see the truck?
I can see the dumpsters. From any, any part of my property, I can see those dumpsters. And for half the year, it's gonna be a bulk load.
There's a lot of pipes there. And it is an industrial zone. And again, you know what I mean, half of it, it was all an industrial zone at one time.
Yeah, but we gotta come up with times too. It also, there wasn't a lot of houses there, and there's a lot of turnover of kids that, you know, there's a lot of little kids in that area now, so I think we have to think about that. If we're gonna shut down a cannabis shop or a community, and, you know, how are we letting a dumpster company come in?
The, uh, just a reminder to the board, there is fencing proposed, so I, uh, you're, you're speaking about current conditions and what you can view based upon the vegetation. And I, I can't, I can't sit here and tell you that vegetation doesn't change, you know, between January and, and July. Yes, it's gonna be thinner in January than it's gonna be in July. Uh, you're gonna have a fence halfway through the site, and the dumpsters are gonna be stored on the opposite side of the fence, you know, uh, what, about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty, plus the width of Center Street, you know, a, a, a hundred and two, two hundred-plus feet away from the opposite side of Center Street, and much more than that from the nearest, nearest, front of the nearest residence.
What's that, John? Sorry?
Should the CONCOM meet with him first before we vote on this to make sure he's got all the, the, the means?
I, I mean, having an RDA certainly isn't a bad idea, to be honest.
Before we vote? I don't wanna say yes, and then have CONCOM and then tie the hands.
Alright.
Can, can I address that, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
So, um, I appreciate the comments by the, um, Conservation Commissioner. I wanna be clear, you know, I, I certainly didn't state, and I'm not stating now, that there are any wetlands on the site, there are no wetlands on the site. Uh, the wetlands are located on the DPW property, throughout the DPW property, and therefore they broadcast the one hundred-foot jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission onto a portion of the site. We're not proposing any activities that would traditionally, and I can't speak for the Conservation Commission, so I appreciate the, the Commissioner, um, making the remarks that he did, that he, that he did about concerns. Uh, we're not proposing any activities that would traditionally or typically, uh, trigger the need for a notice of intent filing. Um, I understand then that we could seek an RDA. Um, if the board is inclined to approve and to approve, approve with a condition, um, that we meet with the Conservation Commission, I, I, I don't know, and I can only speak from the, the position, if I were advising your board, I would never advise a zoning Board of Appeals to condition a zoning permit under chapter forty-eight on the applicant seeking a permanent or entirely different statutory scheme over which the ZBA has no authority. Having said that, I'm making the representation to you that we have no objection to meeting with the Conservation Commission, you know, whether we trigger or are required to submit an RDA, that's under an entire different, entirely different statutory scheme, the Wetlands Protection Act, the regulations, um, you have a local bylaw. Again, I, I, we've reviewed that, 'cause we've had conversations internally, Jesse and I, about what to do, and the reason that I spent so much time discussing the wetland resource area and conservation, and I made the reference to grandfathering, was not to suggest that we're seeking any benefit here, but to suggest that we're actually relinquishing a potential grandfathering case that we would have to make to the CONCOM by eliminating a dilapidated storage structure that is on the site currently, and also to make reference to the full dumpster storage area, which we purposely put as far from the wetland resource area and outside of the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction, so that we wouldn't have to, um, you know, be impinging upon areas that are typically considered, if not resource areas, then buffer zone to resource areas. That's the only reason I spent as much time as I did addressing the wetlands issue.
Thank you. What else, guys? What do we think?
I think I'm glad I'm not the chair of this meeting.
John, thoughts?
Um, as a contractor's yard, I'm inclined to approve it with conditions.
What are the conditions you're thinking?
Um, I, I think we need to come to some agreement about days of the week and the time. I, I think minimally, you know, like seven to six, as opposed to six to six. And then, whether they, they operate only Monday through Friday or Monday through Saturday.
Does anyone think, think about that?
Well, I would agree with that. I mean, I s- I still would wanna be respectful to the business owner and the residents, and mindful of what's already taking place there. 'Cause you do have anchor towing, which, they're tow trucks-
Twenty-four, seven.
Twenty-four, seven, 'cause they do a lot of police calls. You have done landscaping, which has-
Certain these weekend operations there.
Large dump trucks that come in and out of there.
Yep.
Um, so, it is an industrial site, and it is what's happening there. It would be an increase of it, to that. As far as protection of the aquifer, I think, um, light manufacturing poses a much greater threat, because they typically can handle hazardous materials, um, on a regular basis, and after all, that's what started it all with, um, with the screw factory.
Yep. Agreed. I mean, there's no denying that there's gonna be an increase in, in, um, vehicle traffic on Center Street due to this new business, so, the question is weighing that against the needs of the existing residents.
Well, I think, you know, in regards to vehicle traffic, though, I think that although there is gonna be an increase in vehicle traffic naturally because, because it's a new business, I don't know, or probably probably a slightly, probably busier business for lack of a better, better English phrase. But, I don't think the percentage of traffic volume is gonna increase exponentially by a, by any stretch.
No.
You know, I, I, I would, I would-
It's not a large business.
Without looking at putting, putting in, you know, a new industrial park in this spot, which, well, now, it's-
Yep.
Yeah, so there will, there will be definitely an increase, but.
Yep.
How many dumpsters does he, are gonna be there in total in a slow season? How many dumpsters are, are you, are gonna be on the site if they're not leased up?
Probably thirty or so. We have a hundred, you know, a hundred dumpsters, but probably thirty. I mean, we'd never fit that many there, so.
Definitely don't wanna see a hundred dumpsters there, I mean, that's-
That's what I'm saying, I, I-
No, they wouldn't fit.
Let's say worst-case scenario, we're in a recession, nobody's remodeling, what do you do with the dumpsters that don't fit?
Say that again?
Let's say the market collapses, worst-case scenario, you're stuck with all these dumpsters, now what do you do? They don't fit, so-
Put some in puberty.
You're trying to give up that location.
I mean, I'm not gonna, you know, I mean, it's, it's a huge industrial park, so there's always room there, there always rented space.
So, are, are you retaining the PBD location, you're, you're just trying to reuse it, that, with different purpose, or?
No, I'm gonna relinquish-
You're, you're trying, you're trying to relinquish it completely?
But at any time, you know, it's a huge place, so. If I need to s- put ten dumpsters there, you know, I, I, we just could.
How many dumpsters would fit in the back half of that property that you would have fenced in for the dumpsters?
Uh, that's a good question, um.
It, it, and I-
Probably thirty.
And on top of that, is, is the intent to be stacked, or is it, is the intent to be single vial, single level, rather?
Single level.
And, and you've gotta utilize that area for your trucks as well, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's twenty-six there now. One's on twenty-seven, one's on a truck four. And it, you know, they're gonna have room, but not for a whole lot of trucks. I don't see a whole lot.
How many trucks do you typically operate?
We have two dumpster trucks, and then we have seven or eight of the, uh, of the small junk removal trucks.
And the smug, the junk removal trucks are used for the bags, or?
They, they can be, but primarily not. Primarily, they go to a house and customers, uh, tell us what they wanna get rid of, and the guys load the truck.
And, yeah, so it's, and that's-
Like one eight-hundred got junk, it's-
Exactly, like one eight-hundred got junk.
So, if you bring all those vehicles in, and I'm just saying, how does that give you room to store contractors? So you've got, the total trucks would be what, twelve?
No, ten.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and to be clear, we're, we're not proposing that we'd be permitted to store any of the dumpsters or trucks in the front area in front of the fence. So, you asked, you, you said a moment ago, how does that give you space for contractors? So, we, there would be no storage of dumpsters or trucks in this front area. This is an area that is for potential lease to, to contractors. So, any, any storage, and this is, this goes to the point before about visibility of trucks and dumpsters, any storage of trucks and dumpsters, if there are full dumpsters temporarily on the site until they can be brought to a facility the next morning, they're in this area here. If they're vehicles or they're empty dumpsters, they're being stored up here behind the fence. Nothing is being stored at the front of the site.
So, trucks are gonna be where?
So, the trucks will be ins- inside the fence as well?
Inside there as well.
Correct.
So if you have thirty dumpsters in the fence, and this is, listen, you have to answer these questions, 'cause if you've got thirty dumpsters in the fence, and you've got ten trucks to put behind that fence with the thirty dumpsters, how is it gonna fit?
You're not gonna do that.
What's that?
You're not gonna do that. You're not gonna have ten, ten trucks and thirty dumpsters at the same time.
It's impossible. So, what do you, so, what do you do?
I use an overflow site, and, if we have to, and there's more room there once the septic is gone. And it will be much easier for me from a logistical standpoint to store the trucks and dumpsters when the septic's gone. So, that, and I don't know how long till that's gonna happen, till the, the project.
It's probably what, next year, Danny?
At least a year, at least a year.
Uh, they're planning on breaking ground on the sewer project this winter.
How long until they're done and tied in?
Depends, they're hoping to be done by the spring as far as laying most of the pipe, but they do have a stream crossing to do, um, and then a cross-country portion. That will take time, 'cause it's not in the street, but once they hit the street, it shouldn't take them very long. But it's, it's hard to say exactly.
So, so even with the, you know, the sewers in, in, uh, se- in su- notwithstanding, right? So, looking at your worst-case conditions, 'cause, 'cause I think that's where we need to look at this, right? You said you have a hundred and thirty dumpsters, let's say, half of them are out, half of them are not out, just again, looking at worst-case, right? And then we have half of your dumpsters, so sixty, sixty-five there, dumpsters, plus ten trucks, all, all looking for space in that pen, right? And, and I, they can't, right?
They can't, they can't do it.
I, I mean, I-
I'm gonna, you know, they're not gonna spill out into the yard, it's gonna be the fence and behind it.
A- a- and I, I don't mean to speak for my client, but we've, we've sort of had these conversations, right? So, i- it's like the, it's like the used car dealer or the new car dealer that comes to you and says, here's the site I'm proposing, it's two acres, and I wanna open dealership, and you say, well, you know, how many cars do you have at any one, any one time? And they say, well, I could have ten cars, or I could have, uh, a thousand cars. Well, you can't fit a thousand, or, well, that's right, I'm gonna have to find other locations, I can only fit what I can fit. So, we had this discussion as we designated the areas on the site for the proposed empty containers, the proposed potential full containers, and for the vehicles, and said, well, this is the areas that we're confining for now. Right. Um, the, the dumpsters and the, and the trucks, and if they're, if they don't fit in the location, or there's not, not maneuverability in the location, then he's gonna find an overflow site, whether for now, that's BBD, or in the future, that's some other location, we can only do what we can do on the site. Right, I think that's, you know, kind of what we're looking for in this, as well as that, that planned process, right, to, to say, okay, you know, if, if all of a sudden, next, beginning of next month, that, you have this overflow issue, right, and the PBD site is gone, let, let, let's say, procuring an additional site for storage is not an overnight process. So, you know, even if it's a week, give or take, right, that's still time where you have a lot of overflow that needs to be somewhere, right? So, so-
The, the PBD thing is quick. I mean, it's just a phone call, maybe I need ten spots per week, like, it's, it's quick. I have a really good relationship with the people that own that industrial park. So it's not an issue, and it's, and again, it, it's up to me to deal with that, right, but I'm not gonna, they're not gonna spill out, it's a little parking lot.
Okay.
You're not gonna drive by there and see a hundred dumpsters sitting there. Nothing on. I have a bigger problem, I guess, if there's a hundred dumpsters sitting.
And then, when we were there, the, uh, I didn't count the dumpsters, but you said there was twenty-seven.
There's twenty-six and one on the truck that's full, and you know that white truck on the driveway, that's, that's full. Yeah, that's got a bag in it, a junk bag.
Yeah, it's bad, yeah. The, the reason it's sitting there full is 'cause it's hand-loaded, so it's not like it's, we know what's in that truck.
And then, that's not beyond the building from much beyond the building, it's, it's all pretty much right there in front, and there's a lot more space in the back than, uh, what would be where those dumpsters are being taken up right now. So, ten trucks and the dumpsters, I don't think would be much of an issue fitting back beyond that. Especially once they, before you move that structure.
They're gonna have a hard time. There's twenty-six dumpsters, was a lot in there. Yeah, that takes a lot of room. You betcha.
Well, I think, I think when we went and looked, they, they weren't much beyond where the proposed front of that fence site was, right?
Yeah, they didn't, they didn't come here.
Right.
They're not beyond it, but I don't think you'd get ten more. Yeah, they're, they're, they're over here.
Were they right there?
They're out here.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
But they're not going all the way to the back of the property.
They can't, because of the-
Yeah, because of the structure and-
'Cause there's, there's the sink, there's a sink for the door right there, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So, where the dumpsters were, was basically right here.
Right, exactly, yeah.
So, when, if you look at where they are right here on the-
And, and this is the drop-down area right there.
Right, so, so that footprint right there is relatively small where they are.
Yeah.
And if you got twenty-six of them there right now.
Yep.
Once you, once you remove that structure, I mean, you, you have to have better room back there. I mean, you could, you could, I mean, you look at the print of the, the building, you got that whole building, you could put right back down, hold on, essentially, yeah, in terms of space.
And the brook is right here, right?
Do you mean a wetland?
Yeah.
It's, it's a long, you know, like, that's, that's, that's-
We, we saw the, um, ribbon when we went out there, right?
Right.
Yeah, we did.
That mark, yeah, they're, they're, those markers were, they weaved in and out beyond the property line.
Correct, we were, when we saw those, we were on the DPW lot, and those were the wetland markers that Adam's talking about, that were delineated by Millennium Engineering for the sewer project.
Well, they were, they weren't on top of or directly next to the property, they were, they were, they were off the property by a, by a bit.
By, by about twenty-five feet. I mean, you, you can actually, if you look, I mean, it's hard to see, 'cause it's-
At the shortest, at the shortest place, yeah.
Yeah, if, if you look, you can-
Some of them were, were further.
Yeah, you've got the, the wetland delineated line, and then you've got the buffer as it broadcasts from the wetland, so you can sort of see, but, you know, no, no question, it, it's close to the line, which is why so much of the site is within the hundred feet.
I think that was an advantage of having that done so recently. We knew, we could see it.
Right. Alright, so, so if we were to go ahead with this, do we wanna talk, uh, con- conditions?
John, how do you, how do you feel?
Well, they have a list here, so we can start with that.
Sorry, I was talking to-
Oh, the other John?
The other John, I'm-
Go right ahead, go right ahead.
That's fine.
So, all Johns are equal?
Johns, Johns.
All Johns are equal on this board?
No, I, I'd like to hear from the other John as well.
No, I, I think it's a decent business, I, I just questioned the location, and it seems that every time we come up with this, you know, um, people need, it, it's, we had another case where the fellow bought something, and he never came to the town to find out what he could do and not do, and then we get, you know, in a contest, and I don't like that, I don't need it. But, I, I can really feel for the neighbors, 'cause I think it's gonna change it a bit, and they have a right to a quality of life. That's the way I feel about it. And we can argue semantics and stuff and, and definitions all we want, but when I first saw that it was a general contract, and yet, that's not what I thought it was gonna be. And, and there's no way of making that prettier for me, I just, that's not a general contract, and yet, in the sense of what a general contract it does and is. And you're right, it's vague, I understand that, but if I was living across the street, I'd be pretty unhappy. But, I think there's five of us here, so you can probably overcome that.
Alright, so, do we wanna run down what the, what the proposed listing conditions are?
Well, I think John two.
John two.
I mean, you can start with what they proposed, and we can edit through them. But I, I think, you know, the, the primary concerns that we've heard in terms of the days and times, maybe also setting number of maximum number of dumpsters or vehicles in the yard, I don't know.
Well, I mean, any, any con- I mean, any, any conditions that we would put in any approval would be enforceable by the zoning enforcement officer.
The building inspector.
Just Sam.
Yeah, they probably wouldn't monitor it, they would just go out there if there was a complaint.
Right.
Then they would just go out there. I mean, that's pretty much how they do it now.
Yeah, they act on receipt of a complaint.
So, that would be written in the, um...
I'm sorry.
The terms, I would imagine.
I mean, actually, number three, I see, kind of covers the maximum number of dumpsters, because they have to be limited to the area behind the fence, basically. So... Um, well, that's full dumpsters, but we can also add-
Number two covers the others.
Two covers the full.
The empty dumpsters.
Three is empty and trucks, and then, two is empty and trucks, and three is the, the partially full dumpsters that are in the impervious surface.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
About the fence that is gonna contain them all? Is it, you know, a see-through fence, or is it tall and?
It would be a, it'd be a privacy fence.
So, real tall, you wouldn't see anything?
Probably eight, eight feet, yeah.
Anything over would be called a grudge fence, I think, and then-
I think you have to find, yeah, I don't know what-
I think it's six, I think it's six.
Anything over six feet.
But by statute, anything over six feet, if it's installed for purposes of spite, can be deemed a spite fence. For other purposes, it's acceptable, but once you go over six feet, many building inspectors will require a building permit for the fence.
Right, you'd have to see-
Run it by the-
Correct.
Yeah, we just updated our bylaws, anything over six feet now does require a permit.
Right. So, so, most standard privacy fences are six feet, but if you're, if you wanna go eight, and you can get a permit for it, then-
Yeah, just so you can't, if the fence is tall enough that you can't see it.
How about planting the berm? Well, how about screening that whole entire berm with, not shade trees, but-
Abovati?
Yeah, some deer-resistant, you know, it has to be a deer-resistant abovati, and-
Abovatis grow-
Along the street?
Huh?
Yeah, abovitis will grow fast and knock the sound down.
Yeah.
He's talking at the street.
At the street, at the street, in the wooded, so if you do two rows, if you do your abovitis, you know, one row, and then the second row in between, that gives some privacy, and those things will grow like wildfire.
As long as there's enough barriers between the, the actual storage and the road, the more, the better.
So how would you wanna define the planting requirement for the, the berm up front? Number of trees?
I don't, you know, I'm not an aborist, so I couldn't give you a number, what, you know what I mean? You'd have to plant them in such a manner that sometimes, from what I, what I know, is if you plant them under a tree, they may not take off either.
You'd have to have a landscape company.
You'd have to have, yeah, either you increase the berm a little bit, and I don't know what that does to conservation. You increase the berm inside your scope, and give it a planting area, then something minimum, you know, six feet is a privacy screen. And again, if it's high enough.
Yeah. Okay, have to look at that, but I'm open to doing that, definitely, yeah.
Yeah, I think, limiting the dumpsters.
What'd you say?
Yeah, maybe limiting the dumpsters.
Not limiting, I used to eliminate things.
You're opposed to eliminate the-
If you're open to it.
If you're open to it, would you leave the dumpsters at BBD, bring the trucks over? I don't think it would, for logistics is that good, but I mean-
Only what we fit on that other side of the fence will be there.
Yeah, if you see any on the inside, someone calls the department. Maybe he's not gonna, they're not gonna do that, right? He knows they have to fit in there.
Yeah.
So where else would they go?
I'm trying to stall the drivers.
What's that?
You're still in the driver's seat.
Excellent. So, we can go through these proposed list of conditions. And, uh, number one. That seems consistent with our understanding of what they presented. Do you have a business operating the contractor's yard? Is there a contracting yard business that you operate?
Not, no.
Is there a plan to be?
The plan is to, to do that in that, that section, yes.
So, if we approve a special permit eventually, you will incorporate a contractor yard rental business of some type, okay?
Yeah.
So you don't do that now? You don't, you don't operate a contractor's yard?
I do not, no.
So I think this is the offset, is cost, maybe, and, um, by doing so, are you going to have the ability to limit who you let in there?
Yeah.
You know, we don't wanna see another dumpster guy in there, obviously.
No, HVAC, electricians, plumbers, anyone that has a, a van, and, you know, pickup trucks, uh-
We don't wanna see any more containers stored in there. You know, I mean, storage containers outside of the fence. You know, we're trying to keep it, you know, as, as appealing as you can. And in that area, I just hate to see a bunch of, you know, storage containers.
Right, well, especially since, watching outside that fence area, you are, you know, buttoning up against the hundred-foot awkward for two, right?
Right.
So we should add that to the conditions.
So, so you don't want, you don't want tenants that are duplicative of the business that's operating at the rear of the site?
We don't want duplicative tenants, and we don't want storage containers, you know, those big metal boxes, basically, in that area. You have, I mean, you have the building for that, right? Like, you're gonna leave space out in the building as well, for any kind of locked storage or dry storage, that kind of thing. So there's no need for any kind of-
The storage containers you're speaking of, yeah.
Yeah.
How many units are gonna be in there? Is that up to the building inspector, or us, or what?
Totally, building inspector, right, and I think, and then, depending on-
They're gonna have to get permits from him for any work they do.
Anything within the structure, yeah.
And then I think it's important that when it's, the contractor yard is more of a zoning term, and not specific to contractors, if I understood what you were, were saying. Because there's no such zoning for, specifically for a dumpster company.
Right.
Right.
So, the contractor yard is more of a term, and not a specific use for contractors.
Yeah, it's more of a catch-all than anything else, yeah.
Is there anything you can put in the terms for Saturday, that they can't deliver dumpsters to the site?
Yeah, they shouldn't be working on Sunday, they can't deliver the shit anywhere.
But they can't-
They can still go from a site, drop it, empty it, and bring it to another-
And then deliver the truck?
And then deliver the truck.
All right, so let me ask you this. What happens if they go to the site, and the guy goes, I don't want the dumpster after all? I'm just doing a hypothetical, happens, right?
Yeah, I'm just saying, there's more kids, there's more kids around on the weekend than there is a weekday. So, you know, again, more traffic, and, and just trying to limit that in the, in the neighborhood, and the noise. Because you're gonna get these dumpsters from ninety-seven.
You will hear the dumpsters when they drop.
Yep.
I did it six-thirty in the morning, on a Saturday. That sucks.
And we generally only run on Saturdays, and like, uh, when we're behind schedule, just it's not, the drivers, nobody has, nobody works on Saturdays. And say, hey, we need you to work on Saturday, because we're behind you. It's not an obvious thing.
I would suggest that PBD location for Saturday.
Try and get rid of the people, like-
And not before seven anyway, that's gonna be the hour, right?
Yeah.
You're gonna have Sundays off?
Yes.
Yep.
Are they closed on Sunday?
Mm-hmm.
Hmm.
We could live in the hours further on Saturday.
But the bus comes at seven o'clock. What, you know, what, what, not six o'clock, seven o'clock.
I'm out of the house by like, six fifty, and I have to walk down the main road, and I'm seeing, seeing trucks.
Right, right to the triangle there, yeah.
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 I mean, no way this might, it's, it's gonna produce that rock, so it's, it's a trade-off for tax dollars near-term, with unknowns potentially to leaching into our aquifer. I mean, to do this now, I think it'd be a negative, to say yes.
And the blind corner that they're coming up and over the hill by, it's a blind corner, like, it's an up and over hill, and they're at the bottom of the hill on its way. So you can't really, as you're going over, you can't really see that, because of the, all light. The lights there, and that big berm that's covering it. There's just a big truck there, it's, it's kind of a blind spot.
Annie, do you know when or how far the sidewalk is gonna be put down Center Street?
Yes, um, it, I don't know when. We're still in design phases for engineering. But it will go from the intersection of Center Street to Atwood Main, or, Atwood.
So you're looking at, uh, past one fifty-six?
Yes, that's correct.
Is it both sides, or just one side?
Probably one.
I wouldn't, it would just, again, we're still in the design phases.
I guess it's gonna be one.
I can't imagine.
Then if it's, yeah, we're not gonna do two. Yeah, I don't think it would be in industrial zone, I think it would be in the residential side.
Hmm, that's a good question, I don't know.
From my understanding with the initial design talks that we've been doing with our engineers and MassDOT, it is going to be on the, um, it will be on the opposite side of the industrial zone. So I know, um, I think we've been talking about the portion that, uh, that is still part of Bagnell, that, about Center Street, as well as that intersection right at Yale, Yale, because of that little island, that's been tricky for the engineers to kind of, you know, figure out what's best for that. So I'm, I'm fairly certain it will be on the residential side, just based on the initial conversations we've been having.
Would you estimate the time for when that would actually be useful?
That's a question I cannot answer. No, I don't think that's gonna be the case. We do have the funding for it. Like I said, we are in design phases, um, I would think within two years. Maybe three for full completion.
Uh, to add on to his coyote thing, there is a main strawberry field over by there, a cricket field. And bringing in the coyotes, when you're a little bit closer, I know from the rail trail, there's a little pathway, hiking trails all behind there. And if we're drawing coyotes in, it's gonna make it more unsafe for hikers, uh, and runners. Because of, there's also coy, the cricket ball thing, I know a lot of people play cricket over there, and, um, uh, and if we're drawing coyotes in, it's just gonna make it unsafe.
I think that's fenced, though, I don't know if they're gonna-
Well, when the cricket's actually stopped, now, now, now that they didn't respect the town's wishes, so they, they canceled their permit to play there.
So there's no more cricket?
This is true, cricket is no longer, the cricket pitch is no longer there.
But, 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 point taken, thank you.
Yeah.
Good job.
So I think going down the list here, um, number five, the applicant shall construct a eight-foot fence. Specify the height of the fence there.
Can, can we just say, subject to billing commissioner approval?
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you.
Number six, we talked about the vegetation buffer, and our desire to see a plan or something. We, we wanted to see the height of the berm increased, with some additional vegetation planted.
Improved density.
Without necessarily disturbing what's there. We don't want them cutting down trees or anything.
Right, just adding to the existing density.
Adding to the existing density.
And how would you propose that plan be submitted? Is that something that we would submit for staff approval? Because it's a, it's a post-permit condition, so that's always a bit of a challenge for boards.
We do, we do have Annie here for that.
Submitted that for Atwood up top with that developer, and it was supposed to be all along my, my property to the butters, and that never happened. And the ones that did plant up that, so, I guess, I don't know how the town falls to it.
That, Atwood's before our time.
Right.
I don't know how planning, planning usually has the ability to watch the development after the, you know, before it's taken over by the town. And usually, planning board will dictate it in the past, where they wanna see more trees.
For subdivisions.
For subdivision control, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I went to those, and they said there should be, showed them on the plan, and they never put it in.
Atwood's already done, right, and released, it's Billis that's left with him.
Correct, yep.
So in this case, the, it's not a developer, obviously, it's someone who wants to be a good neighbor. And so they're gonna be there, right? And so if they aren't following the conditions of the special permit, we hopefully have more-
More wood, because we could always revoke the permit.
Yeah.
Where with the builder, they're done and gone.
They're done and gone.
Yeah, so, yeah, this would, this wouldn't be something that they're turning over to the town, this would be, you know, for the, for the life of the ownership. So, so in theory, we could, we could have Sam continuously check to make sure that it's, it has, oh.
And, and that's why I'm asking for the specificity, because from the applicant's perspective, it's all well and good, you're telling us you want, uh, more density from a, from a vegetation perspective, and that you're gonna revoke our permit if we don't give it to you, but we need to know what that objective standard is, so we're meeting it.
So maybe we should, um-
See, see a plan before approval, thinking?
I mean, I know that, I, I know in many communities, they'll require the plan, they'll defer to staff approval of the plan. We'll submit the plan, once we've had a landscape architect review it, and propose appropriate plantings, appropriate species, um, locations based upon a site survey.
That is a promise, you know, for sure.
Right.
Well, and, and in terms of a staff member approval, that's what we, we would go to Annie.
Right, correct.
So if we had that, then they proposed the plan, then Annie would be the one to-
Yeah, we can review when Annie has it.
Mm-hmm.
Can I re-schedule one more time, just, would you say, John, sorry?
I said, we can review it when you get the plan, correct?
Yes, I can bring it to you.
That, I mean, that could be staff approval.
Yeah, I-
It depends on how the board would wanna condition it. You can allow me to approve it myself, or it could be brought back to the board, if that's what you choose.
I've seen those conditions, where it's subject to board review and approval, such approval not to be unreasonably withheld. So it's not a, it's not a, an approval that, you know, keeps the hearing open indefinitely while you're preparing landscape plans, but does require an appearance before the board, with a plan for the board to review it as a whole?
That'd make a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, if it does get that, you know, I'd wanna see it, I don't know about you.
No, I think I'd, I'd like to see it, too, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Can I just ask one question? From, from your view, how do you see this benefiting the town, other than tax dollars? Because that's all this is from, right, it's a tax revenue for, for the town, but-
It's also an industrial zone.
I, I get it's an industrial zone, but there's also commercial zones where we didn't allow cannabis stored open.
Well, what if somebody comes in and has the argument of a lead smelting plant? It's a worst-case scenario.
And you're gonna allow that from, from, aren't you there to protect the citizens?
Probably, no, probably not gonna allow, but you know-
We wouldn't be able to stop it, because it's already zoned, and specifically for-
Exactly, yeah, it wouldn't be a change of use, so we wouldn't have any purview to stop it.
Yeah, manufacturing's by right.
Yeah. So they wouldn't come before us.
And then you'd have some, you know, it's, we try, we, we, you know, understand, we are working with you. You know, this hasn't even passed yet.
No, but it sounds like it's going to, it's just a matter of stipulations at this point, I mean, with semantics, so. I'm just, I'm trying to understand the view, as, there's, there's many residents in that area that have obviously voiced that, you know, not understanding what, what this does for the town, other than tax revenue.
The only other big advantage, benefit to the town is gonna be that we are beginning to encourage businesses to come to the town. Because every time a business has tried to come to the town, the cannabis is great, great, a great example of that. No, town doesn't want it.
And I've been to school, with a class two and a half override coming, and, you know, the problem is, we just don't have enough business in this town. And we're trying to do, you know, we're trying to do business the right way.
I'm not against the business, per se, it's just the location, right? I mean, that, that area has changed-
I'm not against the business per se, it's just the location, right? I mean, that, that area has changed from industrial to more residential. I get there were businesses there previously and, you know, everyone had, no, they're still there, exactly, but you have to accept that. But to add to that and change the dynamic with this type of business that's gonna come in, like I said, it's going to change the quality of life for the people that live there. No, there's no way you guys can spin it that says it's not going to.
It's, the, the industrial zone was there, right? It's on the zoning app. People moved in to houses that may or may have not been there when it was zoned the way it is. You can't, I, from my understanding, I mean, we can't restrict what kind of industrial business goes in there if it's allowed by the zoning. That's, that's not within our purview unless it violates something, you know, accordingly to the, you know, to the five different.
I, I, okay, I can see that, but how, how are you going to police the fact that dumpsters come in full? And they state that we don't know what's in it, but we have an idea.
They do.
Well, all right, are we checking that all the way underneath every layer? No.
Well.
I would think it's good business practices. He wouldn't wanna bring hazardous materials in there and if, I looked up his website and it actually says it on the website as well. I mean, he's not promoting.
Every dumpster come in.
No, I understand that, but he's still not promoting hazardous materials and if you, you know, we walked the site, looked in the dumpsters, they were pretty clean.
Yeah, then I could say, I, I, you know, I think that in any business that's going into, there's gotta be that reasonable act of good faith that you gotta be operating under the, by, the, you know, the constituents of conducting business properly in whatever industry you're in, right? So whether it's dumpster rental or, you know, um, I was talking to the business, the, the catering or landscaping. You know, there are certain purviews that would be into there and there are certain things that they would uh, do and not do as part of conducting business in the correct manner, not only for the community, but as far as operating a business, right? So going in, we need, I think we, at some level, we need to assume that. You know, they said that these are the standards we uphold and we don't have any evidence to the contrary that they would not uphold these standards. So at some level, we need to have faith that they would operate under those, those standards, you know, to worse not violate, you know, what they say is their company policy, but also the, all those company policies are reflective of other laws and statutes that they would need to uphold to be in the business they're in.
And, and I, I would, I would just add to that, because I think you said that very, very eloquently and in much the same way as the courts have said it. Because there, there's case law where zoning boards of appeals and planning boards have attempted to deny proposals on grounds that they're fearful of what could occur in the future, effectively fearful of non-compliance. And what the courts have said is that's not a valid basis for denial, the fear of non-compliance. And enforcement, enforcement's an issue. Listen, I represent more towns than I do private applicants. Enforcement's an issue for all the towns I represent. Conditions like this are the way that you require an applicant to fully comply with the intended outcome, um, when an application comes before the board. You know, we had this difficult conversation, Jesse and I, earlier today in putting a list of conditions together. This is an industrial use in an industrial location and yet I proposed ten different conditions and I've just heard three or four or five or six more. So this is gonna be a fairly significantly conditioned industrial use on an industrial site.
Right, it, and that's, you know, where we come in, yes, you know, we're looking at this, that industrial business going into an industrial zone. We, we wanna try to craft it to a point where the best outcome possible for the, the, you know, the local community and the greater growth of community as well. Realizing that, as was said, there might be a business that might come in if this does not go through, that we would not have a purview to have jurisdiction over putting any contingencies on, which in that case it would be, you know, let's see what happens, right?
Yeah, and, and hey, I mean, we'd all love to have an ideal business come into a, a property right across the street from us. I, I get that. But, you know, we can't, we can't pick and choose, right?
Well, I, I think you would have a different opinion if it was right across the street from you. And, and, you know, in, in five years, if the, the testing of that well in that area starts to go up and that also destroys the property values, you know, what's that do for us? Nothing.
You know, but the same could be said of any of the businesses that are already along that street, right?
You could actually, we could, John, probably put monitoring wells in. Not us, the applicant. It would have to do a bench test before and then testing during operations.
On what basis?
I, I don't know.
On what authority?
Yeah, yeah.
Respectfully.
That might be a, that might be a little bit of a surprise for you here, but.
I think the applicant knows it's, it's to his benefit. I think he runs a good business and if he keeps everything clean and above board, he's not gonna have any complaints filed against him. And that's incumbent upon him to make sure that there are no complaints, you know? If he's pushing the envelope, then the people are gonna complain. And he's gonna get more attention brought to him and then that will, you know, start the other balls rolling.
Well, and I'd like to think that, you know, as the greater town services, you know, even beyond our board, everyone else, the rest of the town, you know, learning from mistakes of the past, of how we monitor situations like what I've developed with the screw factory and even with the vegetation from that, from that development, you know, how we monitor and ensure that that is done right the next time, knowing that that did not go as the community had hoped it would go the first time, right? So, so we can take all that into, into consideration and the contingencies that we build on, you know, if it is to be approved, so.
And I, I think whether I agree with you or you are not, he has a right to be there. That's the hardest thing to get by. Honestly, I, I feel for the neighbors, because I wouldn't want it next to me. But, you know, it is industrial land and he has a right to run a business there. It's just incumbent upon him to make sure he's running a good ship.
Absolutely.
Yep, agreed.
Is there another comment?
Yes, um, I think two of the main concerns, especially with people that live near are, well, probably for the whole community is the water. If the water gets contaminated, but also, um, the coyotes, if they're attracted. So I guess I just wanted to know, you know, we can say those things are gonna happen and all, but it's terrible if those things happen, but can, can you speak to the possibility of those even happening? You know, like what would, what could happen on your property that would cause the water to get contaminated? Or what is on your property that would cause the coyotes to come, if any? Do you know what I'm saying?
I, I do know what you're saying. It's hard, hard to answer. Um, there's no food in the dumpsters, so there's no, like, there's, like we talked about, there's no restaurant trash or anything like that. Um, I don't, there's not gonna be an increase in coyotes. I've, I've never seen, seen them at, at our yards or anything, um. And what was your second part to that?
Just the, what, what could possibly prevent the water?
Oh, as far as the water, I mean, I mean, if, if something comes out of a piece of wood and, you know, drips, drips on the, into the dumpster onto the ground, I mean, but that's not, it's a lot of other worst places and situations, so.
I just want, I know those fears are out there and everyone's gonna say, oh, these, these are terrible things that could happen, but.
It's hard to tell what the coyotes are gonna roll.
Right, yeah.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah, absolutely. I just wanted to.
If they see a rabbit, they're coming after the rabbit or they're.
Yeah, that has nothing to do with his business.
No, I know, but.
They can go anywhere. But I'm just saying, there's, I'm assuming there's not gonna be anything on the property that's going to purposely attract.
Well, I mean, if, if there's a contract, a contractor's site or construction site, sorry, that people are working, people are gonna throw their excess lunch in there, right? It's gonna happen. I, I can't foresee how you can control that, so there's going. Any industrial, any commercial, any apartment building.
Even residential, even trash barrels, you know.
The house has to be, you know, trash.
Yep.
Yeah, and you will have coyotes in this yard.
Yeah.
That's for sure. I got them in my, my backyard and, and I'm on Main Street, so.
Yeah.
They, they, they come for the bunnies and the bunnies are plentiful.
I wish they come for the turtles, to be honest.
Um, so maybe if we continue down the proposed list of conditions, even if we're gonna continue this.
Go ahead, John.
Um, okay. Number seven, um, it's the hours of operation. I think we were proposing from seven to six.
About seven to seven, so it's still twelve hours. When the whole industrial area is seven to eleven.
Eleven, yeah.
And we know that, uh, some of the areas, they, they're not in compliance just because of the nature of their business.
Yep.
And we, we previously said no Sundays, so.
Would the applicant be open to restricting Saturday?
Part of a Saturday. Is there times that you can't dump full dumpsters? Can you dump them on a Saturday somewhere?
Up till twelve.
All right.
From what till twelve?
From six AM till twelve, the places are usually open to dump.
How about if you closed at one or so, so you could dump them off and bring a truck back? Would that work for you?
Yep.
Saturday, seven to one?
That would be fine.
Could, could we do a later start on Saturday to respect people?
I was gonna say eight.
What, when, when you sleep in a little bit?
Eight to one?
Yes. Um, eight looks fine the way it is, I think. Nine.
Is it ninety day?
Yep.
Eight was meant to capture the board of health concern, nine, the building commissioner's concern, ten, the sewer department's concern.
Okay.
So that's all.
Yeah, nine, nine is really something that was set up between you and the commissioner directly through an email.
Yeah, well, he requested it in response to receiving the application from this board through your staff. And so it, it sort of came through, via that route, so if you, if you don't wanna include, you don't have to, but we figured you may want to, because it was part of the discussion, so it's up to you.
Yeah, this is a temporary thing and he agreed to it, so I don't even think it needs to be there.
It's going by, by the wayside. I don't know how long you've already been there.
Couple of months.
Yeah, it's a, where do you?
Thirty days left, probably on that.
Two, three, that three month period.
This is here, issuance of the special permit and has.
Oh, it does, doesn't it? Yeah.
Because he can't do anything until after the, the permit's issued anyway. I'm sure the builders own board about it.
Yeah, the, the idea was that it was for security purposes, so we want the fence up.
Excuse me, I'm gonna follow her too. I'll be right there.
Yeah, but, uh, but again, I think since they're okay including in the proposed conditions, I don't see any reason not, not include it, right?
So. Although, although it wouldn't be bad just to leave that up to Sam. I mean, that's something he, Sam has agreed to and Sam is gonna have to, uh, enforce should not be, so.
So could we craft it to say providing such storage occur in a period as, as determined by the?
I'd leave it out, because that was directly dealt, dealt with, with Sam and, and them. Sam's the one that's gonna say yay and aye.
Right.
Say leave out number nine?
I would. I just don't think it's, I don't think it's necessary, because Sam's gonna, Sam will have the option of saying yes or no in the future, should you need something that needs to be done, and that's where he went to the building inspector to begin with. And if we have that in there, that could restrict Sam and the ability to do his job and keep the peace and. So I would, uh, I would opt to just leave that off there and, and leave that up between Sam and, and the applicant.
We have no preference. We didn't put it in there as necessarily a benefit to ourselves. We just thought that Sam wanted it in there, so.
So what is the plan for the time between when the special permit is issued and the sewer line construction is completed? Because you're not going to be building a fence or something during that time, right? And property won't change until the sewer line?
No, the only thing that differs is that we've left this area open here on the plan, existing, approximate existing leach field, because the board of health had expressed a preference that we not
Okay.
allow any storage over that area. Otherwise, we probably would have expanded this area to include all of this, to just be sure that we had whatever overflow for our, but we couldn't, so.
So all the construction of the fencing and the impervious surface full of non-empty containers will occur, you know, at the start, essentially at the start of the grant of, of the special permit?
So obviously, once.
Those wheels will be in motion.
Right, so obviously, once you receive a special permit, you can proceed with, so I, I, I guess what I don't wanna commit to is I don't know when the impervious surface will be there. We obviously can't store full dumpsters until we have the impervious surface, so, uh, in this location, so we need to, uh, uh, be sure that that's completed. Um, with respect to, um, the fencing, does the fencing, I know we've, we've shown it, Jesse, all the way to the property boundary, does that impede, uh, the easement area, the sewer easement?
It will have to be removed when they do their work, but it would be removed.
Yeah, but the intent is not to wait to do that until the, you know, the sewer tie-in, that the intent is to do it on the issuance of the permit?
Yes.
And you, and, and so you, you really can't do the full dumpster storage area until the sewer is completed?
The sewer's completed and the septic's out.
Yeah, because you can't be driving those kinds of heavy trucks over your existing septic, right?
It's, it's empty on the plan, so there's, there's nothing there.
Right, so I think you'd, you'd gain, you'd gain access around it, but you wouldn't be driving your vehicles over this, over the leaching fields, right?
No, no.
I think it's a raised bed.
Yeah, yeah, it's, yeah.
Yeah, it's just to the, to the right of that, the line near the, near the store. Near the, um, septic.
So the idea was not for the, to, to postpone any of
Okay.
the use of the site until such time as sewer.
Right.
It was just to acknowledge that in the future, we would be connecting the sewer and at that point in time, we'd have some greater flexibility behind the fence, so to speak.
So he cannot, basically, I don't think he can do the impervious surface until the septic bed is out.
You don't think you have access to that impervious surface?
There, there's a little bit of space. I don't know if they, a little bit, yeah.
I don't think he can get, how would you get a truck and a dumpster in there?
I'd have to, I'd have to try and see, um, back and, back and in there at an angle or something, but.
Yeah, come in from the other side.
Well, well, then if there are existing empties in that spot and you're trying to, you'd have to move the empties to back the partial in, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
It should be a lot of work, so it's, you know, don't want to have full dumpsters, so.
Um, just to note, the contractor who's doing the sewer just texted me, um, and asked if we could hold off on the fence until the sewer goes by. It should be there in January. And then you can tie in in late spring. Don't hold them to it. But that's the plan at the moment. That's the timeline at the moment.
Should be at that, in that area by January?
That's the timeline at the moment.
So, so he's asking.
Jesse, do you have the ability to construct the fence beginning at the corner of the building to the point of the easement? Partial fence or?
He's gonna need more than just the easement. He's gonna need, well, he's gonna need an over there.
Yeah, gonna be swinging around.
Yeah, right.
You know what I mean? He's gonna have to move equipment. Bring a loader in there to move the pipe. I don't know if it's, is it plastic or is it tuck align? I, I have no idea. I'm not a.
He's probably just asking to keep it easier for him.
Access wise, uh.
Yeah, and I do believe he'll, where that is, he'll need to do some tree clearing as well. So it'll require some, some heavier machinery. So I do think, it's honestly probably for the benefit of your fence.
Yeah, I mean, that's right around the corner, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, well, it's right around the corner for everyone, except for the people that need to look, look at the con, containers until the fence is up, right?
How about a temporary fence that can be removed at the time of the, uh, you know?
Yeah, I, I, I would like to see at, at least that until the permanent one.
Just to sit on top, you know, I mean, you see them.
The easement they're talking about is here, right?
No, it's on this side. I believe it says it. Maybe not on those, but our original plan.
All right.
All right, and, and then we had talked about additional, additional con, conditions of the, uh.
Oh, yeah, um, so, um, we had talked about no storage containers in the contractor's yard in front of the fence. So we want that as a new condition. And, I mean, it, it kind of goes without saying, it, it, it's in number two, but I just wanna be clear that we really don't wanna see the dumpster trucks or the dumpsters on the other side of the fence. You know, even temporarily, because you can't find space. Like, we've had this discussion back and forth with you and you understand if you can get it behind the fence, that's fine, but.
Yeah, it's not coming there.
Or no stacking dumpsters.
And, and no stacking dumpsters. You might wanna put that in there too. I think that was all of them.
Yeah, could we work that into there, add it to the, add it to there. Any, any other discussion? Do, do we have a motion?
No, Chris.
Sorry, Mike?
You're not gonna require him to file an RDA?
Zoning board has no authority to require an RDA, you can certainly require, and we would accept requests that we meet with the conservation commission, we're happy to do that.
Thank you, Mike. All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the special permit with the revised proposed list of conditions.
All right, that.
I second it?
All right, we have a motion and a second, others in favor?
Aye.
Four in favor, wanna post, if it passes. All right, moving on to approval minutes, approval of the October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review?
I did.
I did.
I did.
So I'll make a motion to approve the October nineteenth, two, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, others in favor?
Aye.
All right, other items not reasonably anticipated at time of posting?
Um, only one real thing, um, for the cell tower zoning board application. I had presented, Chris, um, with a extension for the variance until January fifth, twenty twenty-three. We were getting close to the one-hundred-day, um, requirement for us to make a decision, which was gonna be on November fifteenth or sixteenth. So the applicant signed it, and Chris signed it as a representative of the board, so I'll file it with the town clerk so we can, um, extend that to keep it going. And, um, we should be getting the RF report, uh, report peer review back on that shortly by the tenth, so I will send that out to the board once I receive it for your review. Um, and the next scheduled meeting for the board of, you know, zoning board, so many boards, um, is December seventh.
Seven thirty?
I can't remember, if we continued it to a specific time, I will have to double-check, but it will be in the email I send out, um.
And maybe for continuity's sake, we make it seven thirty?
For continuity's sake, we make it seven thirty?
Yeah.
Seven thirty for continuity's sake.
I'll buy you a cup of coffee.
Okay.
Why do I already have it in there?
You already have it in here?
December seventh, yeah.
Yeah, I think we, at the last joint meeting.
I've also already, I've already emailed you all about it once already, um, and I think that's it. Oh, the only other thing that I just wanted to update the board on, um, as far as the forty B that we permitted off of Sewell Street, they did, um, at the beginning of this week, begin some of the clearing that they have to do for their stormwater, um, system that they're putting in. So they started that. I meant Sewell Street, I'm sorry, Sewell, uh. It's not a new forty B, my fault. Uh, the quarry project, um, that's happening, it's been a long day.
Good.
And that's all I got.
All right, so if, if there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn at, at eight fifty PM.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.